All right. Hello, everybody. So, thank you for joining us today. My name is Athena Ford and I am the Public Works Utility Administrator for the city. One of my duties in working for the city is to work on and monitor the city's drought contingency plan, and today we're here to discuss that plan. And I'd like to start by providing you just a little bit of context on the plan itself. Our drought contingency plan has been a cornerstone of our water management strategy since its implementation. It's designed to ensure that we can respond effectively to drought conditions, safeguarding our city water supply, the environment, and our economy. The state does require municipalities to update this plan every five years. So, the core of this plan hasn't changed since 2013. So, the framework and the strategies that we've relied on for the past decade have proven effective. So, there wasn't any need for any major overhauls in this year's. We did make a few minor updates to the plan. These are mostly just technical in nature, just to keep up with the state requirements. So, in summary, while the drought contingency plan remains largely the same as it has since 2013, we are committed to keeping you informed and involved in the process. And to start, we have Grady Reed here, who is our water consultant with HDR, and he's going to give you a brief presentation on the changes that we have made to the plan.
Good afternoon. And when Athena says "brief," she means "brief," because there's not much that has really changed. First, I do just kind of want to go over what is a drought plan. As Athena said, the Texas Commission on the Barren Quality or TCEP requires that every city, pretty much every city in Texas, have a drought contingency plan. And it governs water use during times of water shortages. So, typically during times of drought, as the name would suggest. This is different than a water conservation plan, which the city also has. So, a water conservation plan is more long-term, year-round type things and activities to help conserve water and eventually kind of lower the water use per connection or per cap during the city. That's not a drought plan. A drought plan is just enacted during times of water shortages. Water uses under this drought plan are considered to be nonessential. And so, by statute, by city ordinance, any water use outside of the applicable water use restrictions in this plan is considered a waste of water, and the city can issue fines and citations for that. So, the requirements for plans, again, these are all generally contained within the Texas Administrative Panel. They're governed by TCEQ. Each plan, and the way this plan is set up, if you're familiar with the city's water, or drought contingency plan, is there's trigger stages. So, as the, every trigger stage within the plan is tied to the J-17 index well, which is an Edwards Aquifer well. So, basically, as water levels in that well decline, it initiates a new trigger response by the city. Or, in other words, once those water levels decline, it triggers new water use restrictions, things associated with watering your lawns, washing cars, filling up swimming pools, ornamental fountains, all of those types of things. And as you go further and further into drought, typically those restrictions become a little bit more, I don't want to say onerous, but they become a little bit, they tighten down a little bit more. So, you can water your yard a little bit less, and those types of things. As Athena said, these plans have to be updated every five years. And even if you make no changes to the plan, you still have to go through a formal approval process back through city council. And then this plan, once city council approves it, will be forwarded back to the TCEQ for their approval as well. And we're just kind of at that five-year cycle. Everyone's plans are basically due at the same time. So, all the utilities that have a drought contingency plan are all going through this. Here are the changes to the existing plan. Again, this is it. There hasn't been very many. We did have a public outreach section, Section 2-19-12 of the plan. The plan has provide an opportunity for the public to provide input, and so that's me. So, whenever I'm done talking, and y'all have questions or comments, then we'll take those and try to address those as best we can. And we have to do this even if there's no changes to the plan. So, even if we were coming to you and saying we changed absolutely nothing, we would still have to have a public meeting so that y'all have a chance to provide input on this plan. Other changes, we just added the Carrizo-Wilcox aquifer to the definition of groundwater. Again, as I said before, all triggers are still tied to the index, the J-17 index well, which is an Edwards well, not Carrizo well. And so, again, that's just kind of one of those technical things that at this point, the city does have two sources of the groundwater. The Edwards Aquifer, an additional Carrizo-Wilcox aquifer, so we did want to add that definition. Within the plan itself, that doesn't change anything other than that definition. We did remove staged notice of progress on newspapers and added City Hall, as well as, I believe, Facebook, just to kind of keep up with the times, I guess, a little bit. Not everyone reads newspapers as much as they used to. And so, as the triggers, as the city reaches triggers and goes into additional drought restrictions, those will be published at City Hall and via social media platforms. And I don't necessarily need to go out and edit a newspaper or anything. And the last thing that we did is we updated tiers for the rate surcharge during Stage 4, which is emergency water shortage condition. And that was just, again, that was one of those technical things that between the time that this plan was originally enacted many, many years ago and where we are today, we've changed the water rates and tiers themselves. And so, we wanted to make that change just so we're kind of in agreement on that. I asked Athena right before this meeting, I said, "Have you ever even been in Stage 4?" And she said, "No." So, this is really something that was likely, very likely to never occur. But it is one of those things that the city goes into Stage 4, which basically means that the city's, it's not just trigger levels based on the J-17 well. This is emergency water shortage condition. So, that's also things like, there's a huge, major pipeline break. So, at that point, the city's, I mean, everyone's got to really ratchet down on water use until that, whatever caused that situation goes away. And so, during that time here, can't be water rate surcharges. Those were the only changes that we made to the plan. All of the other water use restrictions, the trigger criteria, none of that has changed. So, at this point, if y'all just have any questions or comments on the plan, we'd be more than happy to try to answer those this month.
Since you've updated the tiers, do you care to share that with me?
Yes. So...
Grady, I do want to add that we're rescinding the period of consecutive days. It was labeled as 15. It is now 10 days.
To match the end of the talk.
To match the end of the talk. That's under the requirements for termination.
So, for example, for single-family customers, the tiers were, again, the drought surcharges only apply to Stage 4. Okay? So, I just want to make, I want to make that very clear that this isn't like something that's routine. That's, again, something that's never happened. Those tiers, those surcharges used to basically kick in at 14,000 gallons a month. And then, they would, under the new tiers, they would basically kick in at 10,000 gallons. And again, that's just to kind of tie that a little bit closer back in with the city's actual rate ordinance. So, that first, that first tier where it says 10,000 to basically 20,000 gallons, that used to be 14,000 to 19,000. And so, now that's 10,000 to 20,000.
Is there a comparative drop even in the commercial side?
There is. It's further down. So, the tiers are different depending upon the use type, whether it's single-family, multi-family, or commercial. So, these are the tiers for commercial. And again, that's just kind of a little bit, a little bit better to match the existing cities' existing rate ordinance. Under each, it really doesn't, once you get to this point, it doesn't really necessarily matter at that point because you're going to be two times whatever your water rate is for every tier. Are there any other, yes, sir?
You've mentioned that Carrizo aquifer. Is there any possibility of getting more from there and getting away from Edwards that has a lot more of the stringent, because I know neighboring cities that use Carrizo don't have the restrictions.
So, Randy can jump in here anytime, but that is something that the city is actively doing. The city, I believe, Randy, the city does not have any actual Carrizo wells that is purchased through shirts again.
Yes.
So, that's a purchased water supply source, and I believe the city is actively trying to...
We have 800-acre feed, so we don't own the well. So, we have 800-acre feed. We don't own the well. So, we do use a Carrizo. That's one reason why we, this city, the Edwards has gone in Stage 4, declared Stage 4. But we've held off Stage 4 declaration because we turn on the Carrizo. So, the Carrizo supplements are Edwards. But the Carrizo is expensive to get. We're also regulated by only 1,000 gallons per minute. So, the Carrizo will never supplement the volume that we need in our city. To have the Carrizo introduced into the city's water system, which is the Edwards groundwater, that water has to be blended. So, we can never go, we don't have enough capacity, nor do they, we would have to build our own well system and pipeline over here to even bring enough to support the city. So, but we do have it there to offset when we get a lot of restrictions where we're getting cut 30% to 40% of Edwards water, we can supplement that water.
Sorry, Grady, did you just say the city has gone to Stage 4? What?
No, the Edwards, the EAA has declared Stage 4, but the city has, we have never declared Stage 4.
Okay. And Edwards hasn't declared?
They have.
They have?
Yes. So, we take the cut. We take that, was it 40% at Stage 4? 40% at Stage 4. So, we absorb that cut, but we have you watering it at Stage 3.
Okay.
So, but we're taking that additional hit, but we're feeding us with Carrizo water.
Has San Antonio gone to Stage 4, then?
Yes.
They have?
I'm not sure. I don't believe so.
Try to follow that.
So, really quick, the drought, no, it's okay. The drought, or I guess, on a residential side, your water conservancy that you're seeing the Stage 1, Stage 2, Stage 3, that is completely different from whatever Edwards Aquifer Authority puts out, Stage 1, Stage 2, Stage 3, because those are pumping restrictions for the city.
Okay.
So, those don't relate to you guys. The only restrictions you guys have to worry about is whatever the city puts out.
Okay.
And we don't necessarily coincide with SAWs sometimes.
And I will speak to that. So, if you, if you notice on the news media for years, we've kind of followed SAWs a little bit. And it made it easier because you see it a lot, a lot of times on the news, all right? We're not doing that anymore. SAWs has gone kind of this direction. A lot of penalties that they're going to imply, a lot of restriction. One of the things they have you starting the water you go on at lawn at 9:00 at night. So, if you don't have a sprinkler system to set up, if you got to hand water, you're going out there 9:00 at night. I'm not willing to do that to y'all. So, that's why we're going to keep the water restrictions that everybody's accustomed to the same right now. So, that's why you don't see too many proposals, changes. And so, we're not following suit with SAWs is doing right now.
I know. But I did, I did actually prefer their Stage 3 from as far as shortening the hours rather than every other week, you know, because at least our water, our lawn got some water every week from our sprinkler system. That, to me, was better than, you know, every other week. So...
It's hard to keep track of it.
Yeah, yeah. It's hard to keep track of every other week.
Especially when you're gone for two weeks on vacation.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, that's one of the good things you liked out of it?
Yes, I did. You know, maybe shortening the hours as opposed to telling us only once, you know, every other week.
Okay.
With 14 days of 100-degree temperature between water and...
Right. Because even this tells us, you know, your grass will survive with 1 inch of water a week. Well, our grass isn't getting that unless I go out there and do it by hand.
When you do it by hand, you waste more water.
Did you say that?
The whole drought system is geared against something that's not achievable.
Right.
Because sprinkler systems, handheld water systems, all water differently.
Right.
I use a walking tractor. It's extremely efficient because it's low-level sprinkling, not up in the air.
Understand.
I prefer water at 3:00 in the morning to before sunrise. There's no mold. All the water is absorbed. But I have to babysit. And for my yard, it takes nine hours to water because it's a walking sprinkler.
Oh, yeah.
So, timeframes will work for me.
Yeah. Anyway, just something to...
Yeah. So, that's the input that we're looking forward, and that's what we'll take a look at.
Yeah. So, maybe if you shorten the hour, obviously it doesn't help him, but...
So, allow the every week instead of Stage 3, allow every week with just shorter hours.
Right. And if you're going to do the every other week, would you post the week on the website? Hey, this is the week that you can water so that we know.
We can start tracking that and posting it a little bit more clearly. That way, people who do leave for a week or anything, it's just posted on the website.
Or it happens to rain the week that we can water. We shut off our sprinklers because it rained, you know? So, yeah. Yeah. Things just to help us keep track.
Yes, exactly. Simplify it. Gotcha.
Yeah.
Are the watering hours only residential homes? They're not like the apartments and stuff?
No.
Do they water at noon?
No, they don't have, they're on set of hours. It's the same for everyone.
And so, they should follow residential hours?
Yeah, it's one set of hours. The hours apply to every one, commercial, residential, and multifamily.
What about enforcement of these things? I see people running sprinkler system every other day.
So, you know, we have code enforcement, right? That's, that's the enforcement that we have for violators. So, a lot of times, they will put out warnings. They, you know, we try to warn everybody ahead of time, advise them of the rules and stuff like that. But the biggest, we can't be everywhere. So, the biggest thing is y'all call us, and then we can send somebody home. But we just don't know when that person's going to be doing it, right? So, it's hard for us to catch the violators.
But you don't look at your, like, my meter is monitored so you can see, you know, when my sprinkler system was on.
Well, we have it, we have it where it will let us know. We're not, we're not looking for that. We're looking for the notices that we get. It's 24-hour usage. So, if you're using water 24 hours, 24, we're trying to notify you that, hey, you got some kind of leak. So, that's what the girls are doing. They're calling you saying, and we get a lot of that right now. So, that's the biggest thing, is letting everybody know they got a leak to where they don't get an expensive bill. But that's where they spend most of their time.
Say, could I report a leak in my neighborhood real quick?
Absolutely.
Yesterday, I like, I heard it running in the morning and the evening, and I looked, and the ground's super wet. So, I'll talk to y'all after that.
Okay. Sounds good.
Is that the purpose of the new meters? Is to help control or capture that water use?
That's a benefit. The benefit is, we have one meter reader for the entire city. So, it's an AMI system. So, the reason we have this system is the reads come to us versus me having to have so many, you know, servicemen out there reading these meters and stuff. So, that's the, that's the number one reason. The number two reason, the number two that we have, it's a benefit to where we can detect, we can let y'all know. So, that's the biggest thing that we have. I have these girls in here, and then I have one out at my office that monitors when there's 24/7. The biggest thing, if y'all have not signed up for leak alerts on our, if you go to our webpage, you can sign up.
Oh.
And you can monitor it yourself. That's the other benefit of it. So, you can set alerts whenever it reaches certain criteria that you set, not us. And that's the way you manage your water versus us managing it. So, because we can't catch everything, but we have, because we don't, when you set the parameters, you know, if you're used to having X amount of gallons per minute, up to 5,000 gallons in a month, right? Well, we're looking something past your average, 6, 7, 8,000, right? So, we're not even looking for that little bit. So, we're looking something that happens 24/7, or you exceed that amount of your average to find out what's going on. A lot of times, we're catching people filling their pools when they went past their average, you know, stuff like that.
It's really, really good. Yeah. Saved our butts at our church because we had a super old system that we grew up in place. But every now and then, we get a phone call from the city, "You guys are using water like crazy." And we go find a leak, you know? So, it's really a nice service.
Yeah.
Do you have a method for what this fellow's doing? Because I've never even heard of this kind of system before. But it seems to me he would have to have an exception that's different than sprinkler systems that says he can run his over 10 hours because of how efficient it is, or something like that. Because...
As long as you're watering within your allotted time, that's, that's it. I mean, he can, I mean, if you have a sprinkler system and it's, and you're watering, you know...
Yeah. Well, this sounded so unique. It just sounded like it took a long time to do it extremely efficiently. So, I didn't...
It's like the Roomba vacuum cleaner, like a pool sweeper, just goes around the yard and it takes nine hours. What's a water waver? Why can't you have a water waver?
Oh, yeah. Did you?
I think these are more personalized questions.
You're more than welcome to apply what you want.
I use gray water for one. I have barrels in back. All my wash machine waters collected. I also collect water out of my bathtub manually if I take a shower or bath. And all those are just set up barrels, and then I irrigate it at night. When I have to supplement it, I use the same sprinkler system. It's based on a lot of background theory to where you don't evaporate the water during the day.
If you...
And it measures the water as it travels. So, there are very little leaks.
So, if you're using your reuse gray water from your own home, that...
I'm using it first. And I understand.
Yeah, absolutely. That doesn't count. And you don't do that at...
But I have to supplement it at times.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I went to a high-efficiency wash machine that doesn't use the 20 gallons of water every time. So, I used to have seven barrels. Now, I have three or four. So, I don't have the volume of water, but I have to supplement.
Yeah. And there is a section of the drought plan for administrative waivers that says, if you, if you want to waiver, these are the, this is the information that you need to cover.
And how much does it cost? Like, the same thing with our variance in the water. It's $150 to pay.
It's free. You just have to reach out to me over at Public Works and so...
Randy's crew's, no, I've done it for years because I've had police officers try to find me for water. I can't accept water.
But here's the problem, is you got to prove that it's, that you're using the gray water, right? We don't know you're using the gray water.
Well, up to the pump, and here it pumping.
Well, that's, you know, yeah, that's, but that's the thing. It's, it's hard to give a waiver for that because it is nine hours. So, I know you don't have enough storage for nine hours, right?
Right.
So, it's hard to give those type of waivers. So...
What do you give waivers for?
To contact her.
So, the waivers for our ordinance are specifically for other health or safety issues. So, like, if you want to, like, pressure wash something, so you can do it for health or safety. But if you need to pressure wash for a different reason, you would reach out for a water waver, or if you have laid new sod. That is really the only thing that the water waivers are allowed for.
Can you tell or tell me if you have a waiver for new sod?
For new sod?
She said you could or couldn't.
Could or couldn't.
Which I can.
Could not.
Could not. There's been, well, I know there's been water waivers for that, for any construction.
I asked the wrong person.
Yeah. And we'll, we'll offer them for, like, special situations, do like the churches, you know, if they want to have like a water day during the summer, we'll allow that for like one day. So...
Yeah, there will...
Like little things like that.
There will never be a waiver for Stage 4. If we ever get into Stage 4, there'll never be a waiver to do that.
That makes sense.
And that's why we're like rationing water supplies. So...
That was actually going to be my question that they, they put on it. As far as the water waivers are concerned, will the Stage 3 affect that? Because I know the water waivers are for a specific period of time. And I've had one when I put in sod, too. And, you know, I'm looking at new people moving in here. Like, I just bought new, a home. The grass was not taken care of. Now, we're in Stage 3. I don't see me going out there until I put in irrigation system and putting on new sod in Stage 3 just to make the outside look good. So, you know, I'm getting a few looks from my neighbors. I keep what's their cut. But that's a wide investment for something that has probably zero percentage of getting through unless I get that waiver. And I believe, like I say, they're for a specific period of time.
Yes.
And that's it.
Yes.
Right.
Does the Stage 3 or the Stage affect those waivers as far as, can you just get them by asking, or is it kind of where we are?
They have been given in Stage 3, and it's specific for a certain time. So, it's not an open, even when you get a waiver, it's not an open-ended waiver. It's only for a specific time.
And that will, as far as now and in the future, is not over much?
Unless we're in Stage 4.
Correct.
But right now, if you want...
Stage 4 is...
Yeah. Not happening.
Okay.
But right now, yes, if you want to reach out and request one, then we can see what we can do.
Next year, I'm not putting that on.
That's what I like to hear.
Yeah.
The every other week watering, is that on a specific week or based on your address, your house?
It's based on your address. Right. So...
The day is based on your address?
The day is based on your address.
But what about the week?
Right now, we've just been encouraging people to keep track of it. So, I did write down y'all's suggestion of putting it on the website. But right now, we're just encouraging people to water this week, just don't water next week.
I thought maybe you could use like the last digit of your address, even week versus odd week.
We perhaps could.
That's a lot of thought.
Using it even on the system. I mean, I'm not opposed to the putting it on the website, like a watering weekly, everybody water this week.
I thought it started specifically, like, the Monday...
It starts with the beginning on the second Monday after Stage 3.
I like your, I like your suggestion. That'd help clarify it for everybody. So, I think that's what we're going to look into.
Yeah.
Because I'm thinking it would be next week because we didn't this week, but I...
Yep.
Right. We will look into that for sure.
Yeah, please.
You have an advocate, right?
Huh?
You have an advocate. You can use that.
I used to have an advocate.
I think that's the simplest way to clean, to clear this up.
That would help.
Yes.
So, I'm looking at this pressure wash column, and essentially, you can never pressure wash because it's showing at all stages. That's true. So, people having their driveways and houses pressure washed?
Unless it is for maintenance, like you're going to paint, or unless it's for health and safety, no pressure washing.
So, getting rid of the mold and stuff could be...
That would be a health and safety. You can pressure wash that.
Okay. But washing sidewalks and driveways, is that one?
To make it, to make it look pretty, no. Not until we get out of a stage.
But it says no pressure washing period.
Yeah.
Even in Stage 1?
Even in Stage 1. Property maintenance, health and safety. It says health and safety or property maintenance, and that's it.
Right.
So, how do you clean your sidewalk?
Don't.
Never, ever?
During drought.
No, that's Stage 1.
Yeah, it's in Stage 1, no pressure.
Stage 1 is still drought restrictions.
Well, been Stage 1 for 10 years.
I know. I know.
Let us look into that one as well.
Okay.
Maybe I can, maybe I can help you out with Stage 1. But yeah, we get a little bit further into it, yeah.
Is there any possibility of adapting the SAW Stage 3 with the every leak, like she was asking? Is that a possibility?
Yeah, that's what we're going to look into. I think we want to try to simplify it and help y'all follow it better than...
I can tell you on my street, there's, it's a new-built neighborhood, and there's a lot of trees that have died because people stopped watering as much as what they need to. Like, I've been in the house for almost three years, and we use stakes and water with all sorts of fertilizer.
What neighborhood are you in?
And Orchard Park, sorry.
Orchard Park.
Same on my street. But like, my trees are noticeable because I stake them every quarter. I put nice tree spikes in and stuff like that. And I hand water like 4:00 in the morning, right before I work out. But there's multiple trees down the street and throughout the neighborhood that have died completely. And yards are the same exact way because they weren't well-maintained prior to people moving in or from the builder, or they bought in the summertime, or the wintertime that was dead, and they never were able to revive it. and they never were able to revive it, and so a lot of the homes in my neighborhood, uh, are now also looking at HOA fines potentially because they have grass back on.
Yep.
Or all that's, all that's thriving right now are weeds that.
Well, they can buy the bags if you put around the trees, and fill the bags up to water them that way.
Okay.
Because that's, you're just hand, putting the water in there, and that, that would help advising them for the trees, and then, uh, on the grass, I know all y'all have sprinkler systems out there, I've seen them all put in, uh, so, you know, it's really to the homeowner, making sure they soak it in the day that they're supposed to water, so.
Okay.
When's it going to arrive?
Hoping soon.
We're coming, Randy.
Oh, yeah.
During our cookouts on May 4th. Any other questions?
Well, we appreciate the input.
Wait a minute, I wanted to speak, speak, did you got my mic on the speaker?
Yes. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so the meeting's been very productive, so I don't want it this to make it sound like I don't appreciate the meeting. My concern has to do with, this is a five-year plan, which should be on a calendar, which should have showed up on my water bill, but it didn't, so here we are at a meeting, that's a public meeting, that the public wasn't invited to. This was posted on the bulletin board out front, five-thirty Friday afternoon, on Facebook Monday morning, here we are on Tuesday, it's going to get back to school weekend, school starts tomorrow, I was in Johnson, it's four o'clock, people are not off from work, which public are you inviting? Because I only see a couple of faces here that I've never seen before, and so how do you get the public to really know what's going on in this city when you don't invite them? I get notifications when the EDC agenda comes out, I get notifications when the parks and rent agenda comes out, lottery agenda, planning and zoning agenda, I get push notifications for all of it. I get the board in front of Walmart, which tells me there's going to be a blow dance at Gethol's golf course, that was nice to know, it was very clear. I get notified when there's going to be fireworks, or no fireworks, or whichever one it is we're going to be doing that week, uh, but this is something that should have been noticed in a way that the public was invited.
Public was invited.
Well, Randy, just.
It was invited, I, you can't, you can't tell me differently, public was invited.
A two-day notice is hardly an invite.
So I'm only required to put it on the city's webpage.
We're not talking about requirements, we're talking about reality, okay? You put something on the city's webpage, how often am I supposed to check the city's webpage? Every day? Every day I have to go to the city's webpage to see what's going on, what I need to do, thank you?
Okay.
That, not, not in this day and age, just Mary Beth.
Really quick, I did post you on the city's webpage, I ended up putting it on the, um, at the reason you weren't noticed for it, and I apologize for that, the, you're able to sign up for push notifications for city council, for, uh, planning and zoning, all that, I created a new category, and I'm sorry for that, I should have put it on the city council and created a new category, sent out a notification, I'll be better about that.
Okay, I mean, we're doing, we're making a lot of improvements.
Yeah, and we're all learning throughout this process on how to better inform the public.
Thank you.
And then I asked to be pushed out on the Facebook, which was done.
That's more important, and I did get that.
Yes, yes.
We tried to get the information packet for this meeting, I think, uh, former councillor and juror has a copy of the presentation, we got a copy of just the code, and that's the existing code, not the new changes, when we went to Randy's office today.
Yeah.
Your, your output said that the packet of information was available at Public Works, but it wasn't, she printed something, so we're curious what the former councillor and chairman got, how it got it.
I got mine at, uh, Department of Water.
Yeah.
Same way as I do.
By where it was listed to yet.
But you have the presentation?
I have the presentation, it, it listed the drought plan.
Oh, you got the same thing I do, yours says draft on.
It says draft on.
Yours says draft on.
I have additional copies.
Yes.
We could not get what you had, when we showed up at Public Works today.
I showed up at Public Works today and, uh, got handed a copy, asked for it and received it.
I was giving the.
I didn't give my name.
I was giving the.
I haven't met the lady before.
So, when y'all showed up this afternoon, she was here at City Home.
Oh.
So that's.
So your staff wasn't aware of that, because she had to go back and ask somebody else, and she just printed it off the website, which is what we could have done.
She, yeah.
And what about when I was there yesterday?
Yes.
What about when I came yesterday? I found out that yesterday.
Well, right, that, I don't know, the, I had the ordinance basically, because right now we're presenting what changes today.
Right.
So we're giving y'all it today.
Where will this be posted?
Huh?
Where will this information be posted so we can pull it off the web?
We'll get it posted, we can get it posted today.
And my question is, why does everybody not get the same thing? When he goes looking for something, he gets something different than what I get, I don't understand that.
Well.
I don't understand why I cannot get the draft.
I didn't know the dra, I didn't know the dra, I know you got, y'all two got the same thing.
Right, but Mr. and Jerry got a draft, so he was better prepared for this meeting than I was.
Who, uh, who rece, who did you receive?
I went to the front office. Asked, asked for the draft notice, or, or for the drought notice for tonight's meeting, and that's what I received.
You must have got my copy.
Only information that, uh, that I asked for, that's what I received, I didn't give